He said he was gonna look pretty, right?
Yeah. Who's that? No, he didn't do it. This new guy is, he's doing stuff. He's fighting these drug guys in the harbor.
Well, can you shut off the board yet?
I don't think he wants to shut off his finances.
I think he wants to kick that.
That's the second highest income in Mexico behind the oil production is money coming back from that state.
Yeah.
There you go, Captain. But, thank you very much.
Pretty good.
I called a message for him, because you know, we've been friends a really long time, to say, you know, it's just so nice to see that you're really good at your job.
Are you ready, Mr. Comer?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe I'm ready.
Good morning. Please join me in the flag salute in a moment of silence. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna begin with item number one. Mr. Simpson, Mr. Hudson? And if, Harlan, if you could identify yourself through the mic.
Good morning. My name is Harlan Hudson. I live at 5443 West Modoc Avenue in Visalia. I'm the president and CEO of Harlan Hudson Entertainment and co-founder with my friend and mentor Stan Simpson of the Biz Talk event, which had its first run last year in 2006. And let me say, first of all, I want to thank Mike Colley and Eric Coyne for helping set this up. I appreciate that very much. We want to thank the Tulare County Board of Supervisors for allowing us the honor of sharing about Biz Talk 07. We appreciate this opportunity very much. The goal of Biz Talk is to equip companies for success through training, motivation, information, and the formation of strategic alliances. Our focus for Biz Talk 07 is to help us prepare the next generation for success in the coming decade. I do want to thank Stan and Buckman Mitchell, Don Grupetti, Grupetti Automotive, Stan and Wendy, of course, Visalia Times Delta, as well as Idea. And the reason I'm thanking them here this morning is not to give a commercial, but rather to say that it takes a community of people to pull off an event like this. And these are people who have jumped in with both feet, and I appreciate that very much. But before we talk about our 2007 conference, let me take a moment to tell you about Biz Talk 06. Biz Talk is about leadership, and to succeed in business, you have to be a successful leader. It is our goal to help people become more effective leaders. And what better way to do that than to bring successful people to our region to talk about this very thing? Last year, we had a wonderful group of general session speakers, along with a prominent group of 12 breakout sessions and panelists. Our keynote speakers were Burt Rattan, Dr. Victor Davis Hansen, and Hall of Fame referee Jim Tunnie. We also feel, as business leaders, that we have a certain responsibility to encourage others to be a success. Along with helping business leaders grow in their businesses, Biz Talk feels a responsibility to our young people to show them how to be the business leaders of tomorrow. To accomplish that, we made the commitment to bring in high school students from all over Tulare County, 18 high schools, and I think there were some from Kings County as well, to engage them in the process. They had their own meetings with our speakers, and even one lucky kid got to fly with Burt Rattan. From the fabulous breakfast provided by Tazaria, to the 12 breakout sessions, and over 50 exhibitors. Biz Talk 06 was a tremendous success, with nearly 900 in attendance at the conference. We felt it was an outstanding turnout for our first year. Now I'd like to look forward. Today, we are here to announce an exciting roster of general session speakers for our Biz Talk 2007 Business Conference, which will take place on Friday, October 5th of this year. And first, let me say that I'd like to welcome members of the Hispanic Tulare County and Kings County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. That would be Giljaramiel, Mike Lane, Maria Narano, right? I'm sorry, I didn't get that quite right. They are here today because our announcement is, I think, salient to the idea that we are a diverse community, and we need to include as many of our compatriots in this, in this community as possible. Let me start first with Dominique Dawes. As an Olympic gold medalist and president of the Women's Sports Foundation, her theme says it all: Success is a journey, not a destination. Dominique Dawes did win Olympic gold. But for her, success is more than medals and accolades. It is something she worked hard to achieve every day en route to Olympic glory. And today, she shares her personal and professional philosophy with audiences around the country. Called 3D: Determination, Dedication, Desire, it's what gave her strength and confidence to handle the professional and personal challenges in her life, to persevere amidst defeat and triumph and victory. Her inspiring message will encourage any leader who is striving for excellence. As a fresh voice on political and social issues, Ruben Navarrete Jr. challenges readers to think in new ways. As an editorial board member of the San Diego Union Tribune, he is a fresh and increasingly important voice in the national political debate. His twice-weekly columns, which I read in our local papers, address major issues of the day, and his column is syndicated worldwide by the Washington Post Writers Group. He also happens to be from Sanger. I think that's pretty cool. Marta Sara Kun de Fox, former First Lady of Mexico. As mother of three, this former communications director rose from being the first woman to act as the federal government spokesman to the First Lady of Mexico. A brilliant innovator, Marta de Fox revolutionized the way the Mexican government communicated with the public and ushered in a new era of transparency in the governments dealing with the press. She has taken strong stands on social issues. She has been an effective supporter of a wide array of social causes. We are happy to announce that Marta de Fox, former First Lady of Mexico, will be a keynote speaker at the Biz Talk 07 Business Conference. Finally, our final speaker is a name you will all recognize. Many of you know him as the immediate past president of Mexico. But Vicente Fox is much more than that. To understand who he is, you have to understand where he began. From working on his father's ranch to Harvard University Business School, he joined the working world and began driving a truck for Coca-Cola Company in 1964. He was quickly promoted and soon became the youngest executive to ever be appointed the president of Coca-Cola for Mexico and Latin America. He turned his meager beginnings into a wonderful success story, which crosses all geographic and political boundaries. Once he realized he could climb that mountain, no wonder he kept going all the way to fulfill the role of president of Mexico. It is our honor, our distinct honor and pleasure, to announce that President Vicente Fox will be our keynote speaker for Biz Talk 07. This, I think, shows our commitment to bringing leaders to this area who will have the greatest impact on the people and the constituents of Tulare County. Again, we want to thank the Tulare County Board of Supervisors in Tulare County for the support we've received in our effort to make the voice of the valley heard nationally. It is our goal through Biz Talk, not only to empower business leaders, but to mentor young people, to bring attention to this great central valley. And we thank you for giving us this opportunity again. We would be happy to take any questions, but in order not to delay these proceedings, we will take questions from the press outside. Thank you.
Good morning. Stan Simpson, 1543 Sierra Drive, right down the street. Anyway, thank you for allowing us to come today. I had a, we all had a great friend. He passed away a little over three years ago by the name of Cal Bennett, and Cal and I are very close. And one of the phrases, one of the sayings Cal had is if you can't stay, if you can't have fun, stay home. And I've always felt that, and, and as I'm advancing in my age, I feel I must accelerate my involvement, because I don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring, and I don't want to miss anything today. So that's kind of why we're doing stuff like this. But I will tell you this. This is, this is a San Joaquin Valley Business Conference in our second year. We use the expertise a little bit by meeting with George Martin, who was the founder and who ran the Bakersfield Business Conference for 21 years. We don't intend to emulate that, because it got so big, it became impossible. But we, we do have a large feeling from the business and from the education and the government sector that, that this area needed to have another business conference. And that's why we're in the second phase here. Connie Conway, one of your members, is the chairperson of Governor Schwarzenegger's California-San Joaquin Valley Conference Partnership and all that. She's doing a wonderful job. She really is. She's the one that really came up with the idea that in connection with this, we're gonna have the Partnership's annual meeting on the Thursday prior, which is October 4th. So now we have the Business Talk on October 5th. Move back one day, we have Thursday, October 4th. Well, in the process of me getting excited when Connie said, "Make your pitch down there," about three months ago, I never checked with the Visalia Convention Center or the New Marriott. And we found out that the Air Resource Conference California had their annual meeting on Thursday. Well, air's the same on Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, so we moved them back to Wednesday at their cooperation. Anybody here, I appreciate that. So what it means is in Visalia and Tulare County, we have Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And it's up to Harlan to coordinate all this, but this is a big, big boom for this county and a big boom for the eight counties from San Joaquin down to Kern County and all in between. Of the, what, 35 board members of the California Partnership, I think six of them are cabinet members for Governor Schwarzenegger, including two from Visalia. One, Mike Christman, is a member of that and a, and a sub-chair to Connie, and then Tom Johnson, you all know. So in connection with the Foxes coming, and, and when I was with Mike Christman all day Friday at the conference, we rode over, and I was with him a little bit Saturday morning having coffee. And Mike and Barbara had had, along with the governor, dinner last fall with, with President Fox and his wife. And he said, Stanley, I'm telling you this, you will, it will be like Schwar, if you have Schwarzenegger and Mrs. Schwarzenegger in a room, it's like Fox and Mrs. Fox. You will ignore the governor, you will ignore the president, because these are two of the brightest ladies you could ever imagine. He said, "The beauty of Mrs. Fox, and it's only excelled by her intelligence, is just something unbelievable." And in connection with all that's going on in the country today, and particularly immigration and minority, I read, is over 50% of the population and all that, which to me makes a majority, but however that's defined. But I think it's very timely we have these people coming in. I can, I can also tell you, and I will finish in a second, because I get empowered and I get excited on this. When you think of what we now have going on, and you think what other county youngsters who have graduated from high school and college are doing right now to bring fame and fortune to themselves, plus this county and this city, just imagine. Next Monday night, Betsy Wolf, a graduate of Golden West and a Cincinnati Conservatory School of Music, and who has just finished a run with Audra McDonald of Fresno, who starred in 110 Degrees in the Shade on Broadway, and we were there back in May, is coming to give a performance at the Fox Theater. Just her, 90 minutes of just Betsy. Aaron Hill, although he struck out twice last night, was 0-for-4, but from Redwood, doing well with Toronto. And Shane Costa, and there's others from other parts of the county and all that. I mean, I'm telling you, the youngsters are getting the kind of education and the kind of energy and enthusiasm out of this county that if you just travel around a little bit, as I do, and see what they're doing, it is unbelievable, or even watching television. Harlan is absolutely correct. I am chairman of the Tulare County Office of Education Foundation. Therefore, I work somewhat closely with Mr. Vidal. And I tell you that Mr. Vidal and his group, last year and this year, it's a huge move. We want to have a lot of young people at this conference and to hear these speakers and all that, because we think it's very important. I mean, the future are the young kids and all that. So anyway, I don't know. Oh, one other thing I want to tell you, just how far the, the energy of this county. I went picking fruit last Sunday morning. It was Joe Fisher. You all know Joe, because he was chairperson of your Measure R, and it won. Good for you. Anyway, I took about four lugs of fruit over to Pebble Beach, because I had a meeting yesterday morning with Jim Griggs on Cody Slobor, a graduate of Golden West. And Cal Bakersfield is gonna try the Pro Tour, and Griggs, he's connected with the Pro Tour. Well, I went through Dean Glass' nine hour and 15 minutes, hit eight of our nearest and dearest friends in Pebble Beach with, with grapes and cantaloupes and peaches and plums and things I never heard of and all that. But every one of those people knows that fruit came from Tulare County, and I think that's important. So anyway, we thank you for your support. We hope you're gonna come. If you're not, I'll come pick you up. We'll have designated drivers, and we're gonna have a great time, October 5th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stanley.
Connie?
Mr. Chairman, if I might. Thank you, Stanley. Actually, it, it will be an outstanding week for Tulare County, any way you look at it. Supervisor Worthley chairs the Air Resources Board here, and it was with his cooperation and also with their staff that we asked them to, to move their annual meeting. And as the chairman, he had the, the ability to hold that annual meeting in the place of his choice. And lo and behold, he picked Tulare County. So we'll have, and that usually attracts 300 or 400 people, I believe, to, to your conference. We're actually doing a joint event the next day with the Air Board and the California Partnership. We'll have its first annual meeting. And as chair, it, it was also my prerogative to invite everyone to Tulare County for that and then do some events in conjunction with Biz Talk. And on Saturday, the Latino Peace Officers Association, I believe, will have their national conference also here in Tulare County. So that's four power-packed days, I believe, for the county of Tulare. I'm very proud to be a part of that, and I want to thank Harlan and Stanley for all their efforts and, and coming here today, Supervisor Worthley. And we'll see you all that first week in October in Tulare County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll be real brief. Stan and Harlan, you're helping to keep and put Tulare County and Visalia on the map, and that's much appreciated. I look forward to the event. I'm gonna have all of my sons, who work for me and with me there, look forward to having them learn from this fine group of people that you've put together for keynote speakers. I look forward to the event. It's gonna be a good one, and thank you for your efforts. I know that this is, takes a tremendous amount of time, a tremendous commitment financially to help put this on, and that's much appreciated. This will pay back manyfold in the years to come, as I see the focus on the young people here. That's why I look forward to having my sons in attendance to that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Anybody who missed last year really missed a tremendous presentation, and I was very happy to, to be in attendance, and I look forward to being at this one. Stan, I think you may have set the record for name dropping in the amount of time that you spoke. But your enthusiasm is obviously catching, and it's very impressive, the lineup that you have for this year, and I look forward very much to participation.
... open the game September 8, Portland, Oregon, Lewiston Park. I'll be there. Next week, September 15, Batman Law. I'll be there. I think you should go.
Played four years of football. All right, Stanley. Appreciate your coming this morning and sharing this information with us. It's really exciting.
Great program. Anytime that we can take the youth of our areas and inspire them and teach them how to set goals to become great in the future, it's gonna be great. Besides that, we've got our different companies. I worked for General Motors for 35 years, and the personal touch is gone out of business. And to bring in people like this, to inspire people, is what it takes for businesses to improve and get better in this day and age. So, great program and looking forward to it.
My comments are very brief also. We have four power-packed days in Tulare County. And my comment is that most of you out here, out in the audience, live here, and thank goodness, because you're not gonna get a motel, right? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, is it your intent to pull the addendum item to discuss that briefly, or going to include that, because I see we have the president, our DSA, in the audience?
It wasn't my intent, but if you so wish it, we can do that.
Mr. Sigley, are you here to say anything?
Did you say enough already?
Okay, then we don't need to pull it, Mr. Chair. Motion approved consent calendar, 5 through 16, and the addendum.
Second.
Moving second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, since we are so efficient this morning, we are going to go to public comments. Are there anybody wishing to address this board on items that are under jurisdiction, but not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll move to supervisor matters. Supervisor Ennis?
I had, had the opportunity last, last week to go with Chief Sunderland up to California Hot Springs and try to bring everybody up to speed on the plan for our fire protection in that area. And hopefully, we opened some eyes and, and come up with some new understandings on what is going on and give them a little bit of reassurance that they weren't gonna lose the insurance on their homes and the different things that they were concerned about. Last night, I was up in Camp Nelson, talking to the folks up there. And of course, everybody in the mountain areas is concerned about fire. So they were more concerned about the people in the area, because CDF came through, really didn't do a thorough job of, of looking at the properties. Still people that didn't clean within the radius they need to do of their properties, and so they were concerned about that. Pretty pleased with their, with their fire captain they've got up there. And, but just the little issues that you get onto. I told them with Measure R, we'd be getting to their roads, so hopefully, that'll happen. But you get the mountain communities, you know, and they're, they're concerned, because they think that maybe one area is getting more than they are. But all a good group of people and had a real good time, so that's about all I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the fire note, I had this conversation this morning with our fire chief, and it appears, doesn't appear that our Badger Station Amador Plan is going to be successful. At least as of today, it appears that CDF is taking the position that this is a brand-new contract as opposed to an extension of an existing contract, in which case they are going to insist upon three people being stationed at the station 24/7. Obviously, the cost of doing that is quite exorbitant, so that's an issue in the future. But just to let the board know what I've heard today. Air Board will be meeting on this coming Thursday, and one of our topics will be a policy of environmental justice that I expect will be passed. Nothing terribly controversial this, this time around, which is kind of nice for a change. It's been a very interesting year to be chairman of the, of the Air Board. And having, having the conference here in Visalia is gonna be one of the nicer, lighter sides of the, of the year. So look forward to that. That's it.
Supervisor Cox?
Two things. This Thursday, we have the, at 1:00 PM, our next multi-agency gang task force committee meeting, where we'll, where Mr. or Jeff Forbes on our staff has been working with me to create an agenda and to work on putting a group of folks together in the county that will actually split out into groups, create two committees, and start working on, first, one committee working on suppression, and the other committee working on intervention. So that, that appears to be moving forward. Last month, we put out the call for, for information and feedback from the folks. I've got about an inch and a half thick of paper on my desk of responses from various agencies. So it appears to be, we're on our way to making a difference in Tulare County with our gang activities. Second thing, last week, Britt Fussell from RMA, myself, had a meeting with URS, which is a group of consultants out of the, actually, they're worldwide. But we had folks from the Bay Area and Fresno offices come in, and we talked about our levies and the issues we're having with our levy districts here in the county. It was a very productive meeting. As you know, FEMA's going through and creating digital maps or getting rid of the old topographical things, or creating these digital maps and changing the floodplains pretty much everywhere throughout the county. So we actually got a sneak preview of the FEMA maps that aren't yet available, but they're available through the back door on a website. And we actually saw overlays of how the, the new maps are going to look. And they're, they're saying that the new maps are up to 99% complete and correct right now. So what this means, just in the city of Visalia, that the, about the 20% or so of the city that's in a floodplain, most of that will go away, but an additional 40 to 50% will be in the new floodplain. Again, the meeting with URS was very instructive. Talked to them about the height of the existing levies, and come to find out, the problem's not quite as bad as we thought it was because of the, the amount of water we receive down through the St. Johns and the other ditches are not as much as they had assumed they would be. And so instead of having a six or eight or 10-feet levy problem, we have a two-foot levy problem, which, which drives, in my eyes, drove the cost of repairing and fixing, if need be, the levies way down. So instead of having this big six-foot problem, we now have maybe a two-foot problem. So very informative, very instructive. And we're, we're moving forward now, gathering data from the existing or the, the pre-existing levy districts to see what information they have on file that might help us in our, our search to, to get these levies certified throughout the county.
Supervisor Conway?
Last week, we had a, a special meeting called by the California Partnership to discuss high-speed rail and our support of that for various routes and, and funding mechanisms. There were two commissioners from the high-speed rail, in addition to their executive director and assistant executive director, but also Lieutenant Governor Guaramendi and Congressman Costa, who actually, 20 years ago, when Mr. Guaramendi was in the Senate and Mr. Costa was an assembly member, they co-sponsored the high-speed rail bill, and it really...
They both claim to be fathers.
Yeah, they both claim to be fathers. I told them they were both grandfathers, but they're claiming still to be fathers. Anyway.
Assisting on a DNA.
That was, that was 20 years ago, and, and we're still where we're at. I believe it was a productive discussion, especially because you had some folks from Caltrans there, CTC commissioners, and John Barna, the executive director of CTC. And the current thought is that perhaps there's some funding money available for 1B from transit dollars, not from any highway dollars. Of course, that, that has to be vetted and put out there. And as we were warned by Mr. Barna, you know, that's a slippery slope. If you're gonna open that can of worms, there may be others that think it's a good idea for other items other than high-speed rail. As Supervisor Worthley likes to say, "No good deed goes unpunished." But it was substantive discussion, I believe, and, and some action will take place on that. And I think through the meeting, as far as the valley is concerned, I believe that the partnership will recommend, I mean, our recommendation or our thoughts are that the Altamont Pass makes the most sense for all involved for high-speed rail, should we, if and when we get to that decision-making process. That's been controversial, whether it would be Pecheco Pass or Altamont Pass. I think we, the partnership, and we're not the only ones that have a say in this, but the partnership is convinced, I believe, that Altamont makes the most sense for the entire valley, any way you look at it. So it was a pretty good meeting. I expect to hear more from others. Partnership meeting on Friday was long, but also productive. We only meet quarterly, so we have a lot of business to do. I had an opportunity to sit with a, in a meeting yesterday with the governor in Fresno. As you know, he was in Fresno for an event, and some of us then had a quick meeting with him regarding budget issues. Obviously, we have no budget. One of the things that concerns me is that the governor is promising to take care of the rest of it with, with the blue pencil. And of course, conspiracy theorist that I am, I'm not really, but in my mind, the first people that get blue-penciled is local government. Governor's promised in some areas that that won't happen. The governor's promised in some areas that that won't happen, but I actually will be in Sacramento for the next couple of days to -- there's a lot of things on my mind as I get there. I mean, one of the main things I'm doing is a challenge awards event for CSAC. As you know, I participate in that annually, and I will be doing that again this year. But I also have some land use issues to discuss, if you will, with some of the governor's administration, some West Nile virus issues that I'm trying to get on top of. But the blue line for the budget is, I believe, important to us, and so it's my quest to figure out if we get to that point, what exactly, where exactly where those dollars come from.
Anything about Williamson Act?
I keep hearing that the Williamson Act will not be blue-lined and that it is protected, but there's only X amount of dollars. So as we all know, you know, they're putting considerable pressure on the Republicans to pass the budget as it is, with the caveat that they can still reduce the budget through this blue-line operation. And non-trusting that I am, I want to make sure exactly what that entails and how that will impact us, because I'm almost certain, I don't see a way that it can happen without impacting us. And by us, I mean local governments. So that will be my quest as part of my trip. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Last Wednesday, Director Henry Hash and I went to a redevelopment seminar in San Jose. And a couple of points that we learned from this, we have some issues coming because of state legislation about relocating people. Let's say we're buying right-ofways now, bigger four roads, that we now have to offer them up to $5,000 to hire an appraiser and/or an attorney or both and relocate them. So this adds substantially to any cost that government's going to face in the future. Thank goodness that because we're mostly dealing with rural roads, we have very few relocations. But this is going to substantially impact urban redevelopment. So it'll, the larger urban areas will have the brunt of this cost, so hopefully, we'll be able to get it changed. The other thing.
Mr. Chair, ask a question. So just not businesses, then, personal residences?
Personal residences.
Dislocated personal, well, that's the change, the businesses, you always had to do that, but so it's personal residences as well now?
Correct.
That's big.
The other thing we learned is our keynote speaker during lunch, more or less, told us that the regional blueprint plans that we're working on at TCAG and also the partnership is working on a regional plan, is that they intend to basically look at that plan and use it as a model for funding. So in other words, they're going to extort you according to the blueprint plan. So we're getting back to TCAG saying, "Make it as broad as you can," because if you make it too narrow.
Extort is such an unkind word, Mr. Chairman.
It's the only word I can think of. So it was a very interesting meeting to find out what the state has intended for local government. This Thursday at 10:00 at the board chambers, we were having our first outreach meeting on tourism, and we have several of the chamber conferences will be here, and we'll discuss the county plans for our tourism. And we will have subsequent meetings, because a lot of chambers cannot make it this Thursday, so we'll have follow-up meetings with different chambers. Hopefully, we'll have a very large meeting following this large meeting with the ones who couldn't make it. So with that, that's all I have. Let's move to the timed items. And we're going to take item two, but item three and item four are off agenda.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Supervisors. I'm, my first time up here, actually, as a fire department member, so glad to be here, I think anyways.
My name is Kurt White, and I'm with the Tulare County Fire Department. I'm here requesting the board to order the costs associated with abatement of fire hazards to be recorded in the office of the county recorder as a lien. The contractor's costs plus administrative fees came to a total of $8,416.50 for the cleanup of 17 parcels throughout the Tulare County. We request that the county auditor place such costs on the county tax roll as special assessment. Last, we request the board to adopt the attached resolution with Exhibit A, parcel analysis, and Exhibit B, the proposed nuisance abatement lien. The contractor's costs were $4,762.50. The administrative fees were $3,654. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Really, just a representative today, the person that normally does this is not available, so that's why I'm here.
Chairman, I, probably a question beyond your purview, but I'm just curious if we know Grand View properties are, they're the prominent name displayed here, is that a corporation or a partnership? Do we know?
You know, I don't know. All this was done prior to my, actually being hired with the county, so I'm sorry, I'm limited on the information.
Mr. Chair, I can answer that. I actually contacted Rita Woodard in the auditor's office yesterday. It's, on my understanding and hers, it's a partnership with several partners, some of them not, maybe not knowing each other, the left hand not knowing what the right hand is doing. I asked questions as far as, were these some of the properties that were foreclosed on and/or sold in the lien process? And the answer was no, that these were other properties. So, but it appears, you know, that we have an ongoing problem with these folks. It would probably cost them less money to buy a tractor and go out and diss their own fields than what we're charging them for the contractor and the admin fees. So it's an ongoing problem. I did follow up with the auditor yesterday, who assured me that these are new properties that are not, that have not, probably not been sold to someone else, but they're still in Grand View's ownership. And if not, the lien goes with the land and not with the owner anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We're going to open the public hearing on this matter. Anybody wishing to address this issue, please come forward to the mic. I used to bang the gavel, but I won't do it today. Public hearing is now open. Seeing no one wishing to address this issue, we're close to public hearing and bringing back to the board.
Chairman, I would move approval of item two.
Second. Moving second, please catch your vote. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving to items untimed, item 17, Human Health Services.
Chairman, I'm Shida, members of the board, TAO Bennett and County Council for the record. I'm Donnie Griffin, Director of Human Services. The children, the Welfare Child Services Department System Improvement Plan requires the Board of Supervisors to approve its plan before we submit it to the California Department of Social Services. And in accordance to the California Child Welfare System Improvement and Accountability Act of 2001, this plan is being presented to you today by the Department of Health and Human Services and the Tulare County Probation Department. Kristi Myers, the Assistant Chief Probation Officer, and Judy Rutan, the Deputy Director of Child Welfare Services for Human Services, will make a presentation to you today. And I think that Judy, who is responsible for the safety and the protection of care of some of our most vulnerable children, will start off the presentation.
As Mr. Griffin stated, my name is Judy Rutan, and I'm the Deputy Director for Child Welfare Services in Tulare County, and it is a pleasure to be here this morning and present. I think Mr. Griffin put a heavy load on my shoulders there. So thank you for that, and I'm very much up to the challenge and have been for a number of years, working in child welfare services. And a lot of people will say, "Oh, how can you do that job?" But I will tell you, I absolutely love the job I do, and I do not think that there is a more important job, and forgive me if I slight anyone in the audience or up there on the podium as well. So like I said, it's a pleasure to be here this morning. As Mr. Griffin also stated, Kristi Meyer from the probation department and myself will be presenting on the system improvement plan, which is a document that each of you have before you today. And basically, within the system improvement plan, there are initiatives and strategies that are outlined that are currently being implemented or that are planned to be implemented by the probation department as well as child welfare services in order to improve service delivery for children and families living in Tulare County, as well as to strengthen our performance outcome measures in Tulare County. The vision, let's talk a few minutes about the vision. This vision actually comes from the California Stakeholders Report from September of 2003. Every child living in a safe, stable, permanent home nurtured by healthy families and strong communities. A lot more difficult to do than it actually says. So that really very much is the vision for California and all the counties in California. The stakeholders group came together as a result of the federal review, and the fed's, the federal government came in and reviewed the state of California several years ago, and the state of California failed the review. So basically, the stakeholders group was brought together consisting of state employees, county employees, community providers, service providers, and really looking at, they were tasked with looking at the child welfare system and what was currently working within the child welfare system, and more importantly, tasked with revising the system, because what we have seen is that the system really isn't working. So how can we do a better job of what we do? What are the barriers in doing that job, and how can we break those barriers in order to do a better job? So what do we mean by doing a better job? Let me explain here with regard to, this basically shows us how we got where we're at. We have, as I said, the federal review came in and looked at the state of California. State of California failed that review, and so it came up with a program improvement plan. So California, by the federal government, was tasked with basically coming up, like you said, with a program improvement plan, identifying strategies in which to improve. California then went to the counties and basically reviewed the counties. And what it was showing is the counties in child welfare systems were also failing their reviews. And so they basically tasked the counties with coming up with a system improvement plan, and that is what you have before you today. So with those new initiatives, strategies, basically what we're looking is outcomes of safety, permanency, and child and family well-being. I am going to go two slides ahead. Yes, I am order slide challenged, and then I'll go back to these ones. So let's talk a little bit about the new system, Child Welfare Services System Change. It's really based on prevention and early intervention. So what we're attempting to do is catch, if you will, families early, and so that they have a better chance of success. Traditional system really waited until families were in crises and really addressed it, addressed issues through intervention. Customized intake process, not a one-size-fits-all. So as a family comes into a system, we don't group them together. We really look at family to family and basically, what are the issues with that specific family? Measures effectiveness in terms of child safety, well-being, and permanency. Basically, the old system was really looking at, we developed a service plan for our family. Were they compliant with it, were they not? But basically, we really started to look at measures, and we'll talk about that as this presentation goes on, really being affected in terms of providing for a child and the family. Very much family-focused and driven, so we are making families a part of the system. And what I mean by that is family engagement, strength-based practice, and really turning to families. Who knows your family better than you? So basically, really staffing cases and inviting families into our system and identifying what the issues are and what their strengths are in order to solve the concerns in the family, so that we can return children to homes. Promotes values of maintaining, enhancing connections between children in care and birth families. And basically, what that means is if we need to remove children from families and place them in foster care with relatives, what we really want to do is keep that connection, strengthen it, enhance it, and have the foster parent or relative connect with the birth family while that child is out of the home. Promotes support for youth aging out of the system. What we were really finding, and this is no surprise to anyone, children were growing up in our system, and when they turned 18, they were aging out of our system. They had nowhere to go. They could not live out by themselves. They weren't prepared. So basically, we said, "You're done, you're out." And so it's really looking at, how can we promote support for youth? And we'll talk about some of those initiatives as we go through this presentation as well. And last but not least, promotes collaboration, calling on a network of agencies, service providers, and families within communities. So it's really looking at opening up child welfare services, and we used to be a very closed system. In some respects, we still are, and we need to because of confidentiality. But really, opening it up, working with community providers, working with service providers, working with families, working with relatives. It's really about working together because we're all working with the same family. So it's getting rid of that silo effect and helping, by us all working together, helping a family navigate a system and be successful. So let me go back to the previous two. And I won't concentrate too much on this because I want to really get to our strategies with regard to fiscal year '05-'06. But in the past, what we were looking at as far as the system improvement plan, the first system improvement plan we did, goals and accomplishments for 2004-2005, reducing the number of multiple foster care placement. And the state definition of multiple foster care placement is if we have a child in our system for consecutive 12 months, more than two placements is considered multiple foster care placements. And there are a number of challenges with regard to foster care placements and attempting to keep one or two placements, things such as the number of foster parents that we have. We continuously recruit for foster parents, but it's very difficult to keep and maintain healthy foster homes. And mandated state regulations with regard to relatives. We are really attempting to place, if we have to remove a child out of a home, we like to place with relatives. However, we can't just place with relatives. There are background checks that we need to go through and various things that are mandated. Not that they're bad, that they're good, but the process takes some time. So it really impacts the number of foster care placements. The second one, improved frequency of child contacts.
Can I ask you a question?
You certainly can.
In looking through this, I'm looking through Exhibit Three now, where you're, and that's kind of where you're at now, the, creating some new foster parents. It seems to me, and I've heard a few people say that past foster parents, like myself, my wife and I were foster parents years ago, it seems like you have a pool of people there that, and we've talked to other people in the same situation where they've not been contacted after several years to see if they might want to become foster parents again, and that's not really listed in your, and I think maybe as one of your milestones or focus, you might go to that pool of foster parents whose licenses have expired. I don't know if it's a quicker process to get someone whose license is expired to get them re-upped, or if they have to start from square one. If you have to start from square one, like you said, it could be a long process. So it seems like you've left a group out there, as well as a family, you have a group of past foster parents that might well consider taking a child into their home.
I appreciate that comment, Supervisor Cox. I think that's a really good point and something that we can certainly look at.
And I would imagine that's a very long list.
Okay. And, you know, addressing a part of that, I would say too that part of the system change with regard to foster care licensing is really doing recruitment in a different way as well. And it's not people that basically, you know, will knock on our doors and come in and say want to be a foster parent. There are those people, however, we really However, we really need to get out into the community more, work with other service providers. And we have done some of that, as you write in this document. I think we need to do a better job of that. So, I appreciate your comment. Okay. Improved management information system. What this actually means is child welfare services has what we call, lovingly referred to as CWSCMS. And that basically stands for Child Welfare Services Case Management System. The state mandates each of the counties to input into this software system. And basically, that system is a very cumbersome system. It takes a lot of training for staff to input into that system, and it is a constantly changing system. So, we are basically working with the state, with the, the project and their vendor to look at that management information system and are actually in the process of, by the year 2011, to have a new web-based system in place, which hopefully will be easier to maneuver and train staff on. Increased service delivery for children in the service array. Basically, what we're talking about is service delivery. We started with child welfare services, and we're looking at how we deliver services to families and children in Tulare County. And it's really, what, what I like to refer to is really getting back to basics and putting child welfare services back together again as we deliver services to children and families. And as Chairman Ashida is aware, a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting with the mayor of Porterville with regard to some of the, the service delivery model that we're currently working on. And what I mean by that is we are taking all of the continuing staff and centralizing them. Because what we were finding is, is as we studied child welfare services, is that it was not a standardized operation. So, if you lived in Porterville, you could get one type of treatment as opposed to living in Dinuba. And that was a real issue and something that we really took a long, hard look at. So, by centralizing services, centralizing our operations, what we're looking at doing is standardizing our practice, and no matter where you live in Tulare County, you will get the same level of service, same hours of operation, and those kinds of things. So, and it's really, I, I need to emphasize, in, in centralizing services, that doesn't mean we're taking services away from outlying areas. We still have an existence through our emergency response staff out there, through clinical staff, through nurses. And basically, the out, out, the, the case caring workers will be out in the field in those outlying areas. It's just a different way of thinking about service delivery to really help enhance it for the families that we serve. So, and the service array is really addressing what services are out in the community, connecting with those partners, having contracts with those partners in order to provide service delivery, and then also looking at the gaps in services, identifying where there are gaps, what services we do need, and then partnering with agencies in order to fill those gaps in services. Feasibility, study of a receiving home. The first system improvement plan did look at a receiving home, issues with when we detain children, sometimes, as Supervisor Cox was, was addressing a few minutes ago with regard to foster homes in that pool of previous foster homes. Really looking at, where do we place these children when we pick them up? And so, we're really looking at that. I, I think as we talk about some of these new initiatives, the receiving home idea can be replaced, if you will, looking at family-to-family initiatives, strength-based practice, wraparound services, intensive treatment, foster care, and those kinds of things. And the probation department, improved management information systems, which Kristi will be talking about in a few minutes. So, basically, for the system improvement plan you have in front of you, what we're looking at for areas of improvement for fiscal year 2006, 2007, the first one, identifying decrease the rate of child abuse and neglect in foster care. What we were seeing when we looked at our quarterly reports from the state is, is that we had zero percent with regard to child abuse and neglect in foster care. Now, you would think that's absolutely wonderful, right? Well, when you see zero percent, you suspect. What we found out through study is there actually is abuse in foster care, unfortunately. And what we were seeing is that staff were not trained properly, so it was a system issue and that we trained staff to input correctly into that management information system. And we are now seeing through our quarterly reports that there is some abuse of foster care, some abuse of children in foster care.
Judy, I would just, I'm sorry, I should have spoken sooner, but when you were talking last about the '04, '05 goals and accomplishments, some of them were kind of stated more in terms of goals, but there was not really any statement about accomplishments. I'm thinking about number one, reduce the number of multiple foster care placements. How successful were we in doing that? Did we actually reduce? Did we see as a percentage, a total of the, the child welfare cases, that there was a reduction in that? Or did we, I mean, it's good to have goals, obviously, but how, how are we, how are we doing in, in meeting those goals?
Let me put my glasses on enough. Multiple foster care placements. Basically, in April, the state average is 84%, and we are now at 78%. So, we are steadily improving in that area. We were lower than 78% previously, Supervisor, but we are steadily improving in that area.
Okay. I mean, I think, you know, it, it's helpful to me when you say, you know, we have goals, but in, and then, well, how are we doing in, in getting to those goals?
Allow me to address that because I really, I did, with regard to 2006, 2007, which I, I was a part of that system improvement plan. I do have percentages in here, and I, I have no problem providing those percentages to you. It may be more helpful at some point in time to basically come back and do a presentation with regard to points in time, where we're at currently and where we have been previously. So, I would love to do that at some time in the future.
And my assumption is that when you have these broad categories, then you say, you know, we have, the, the goal is to improve, you probably didn't have some milestones where you say, "This is how we gauge success. If we're at this point, you know, we hope in six months to be at this point," and then we go back and measure, were we somewhere in between? Did we, did we, did we beat that goal or something of that nature? Is that, is that a correct assumption?
Yes, that is correct. And actually, you know, when I talk about the different percentages, we, in the information of the quarterly reports we get from the state and off the Berkeley website, we are really talking about six month, six months previous. So, but basically, you're absolutely correct. That's what that is. Improved child abuse and neglect by time to investigate. Basically, what we were seeing with regard to this is that we were at, we have three different kinds of referrals into our system. Evaluate outs, which basically mean reporter calls in and it doesn't meet the, the mandated guideline. So, we basically refer that out to service providers with regard to services for the family. We have immediate referrals, which mean if a, a child is at immediate risk, sexual perpetrator in the home, child has fractures, child has bruises, we will immediately respond with law enforcement within a two-hour timeframe. State mandate, 90%. We are actually at 95% on that. And basically, that 5%, I would say that we do go out on those immediates, but there is inputting into the system, which sometimes isn't done in a timely manner. 10-day referrals, we were not meeting our guidelines on those. And let me check the timeframe on that. 10-day referrals, we should be at a 90%. We are actually at 82.8. We've improved since 2005 by 15%. So, we are improving steadily in that area by concentrating our efforts on what the issues are. One of the issues, for instance, was that our policy and procedure had the referrals going from the hotline unit into an office assistant box, and they would assign the referrals out. If that office assistant wasn't in for one or two days, that referral sat there and ate up some of that 10-day timeframe. So, in essence, a social worker had eight days to respond as opposed to the 10 days. So, basically, looking at those kinds of things, once again, timely input into our system. Worker could go out in the 10-day timeframe but did not input that into the system. It was considered a late response. So, we're working on those issues too. Decrease the rate of multiple care foster placements. We talked about this one already. We continue to work on this, and I've already given the, the rates with regard to that and, and discussed the challenges as well with regard to that goal. Reduce the rate of foster care reentry. Basically, what we're, this, this is a very difficult one too, is looking at attempting to keep children, number one, out of our system, and number two, from re-entering our system. And let me see the rates on this one. We are at 9.1. The state is at 10.8. And we really should be at 8.6 with regard to the federal measure. So, we're doing better than the state, not as good as the federal outcome measure with regard to this. So, basically, really looking at this, what we've really started to do, and I'm so, if I may say, proud of this program, is differential response. And really, I'll, I'll talk about differ, differential response in a few minutes. But it's basically working with community providers in that early intervention and prevention of families and, and seeking services and referral, providing referrals out to the family resource centers for, on behalf of those families, so they can get services. And probation is to improve the case management system. System change initiatives. I talked about the child welfare services and, and looking at the, the change in the system. And what we're really speak, speaking to is cultural change. So, we're really looking at strength-based practice, engaging, supporting, and protecting families, especially during adversity and change when we're removing their children. Support development, well-being of individual family members. So, really looking as, as the family in totality, not just with regard to the child and the family and protecting the child, but really working with the family. Embraces family participation in decision-making. This is very difficult to basically do because it's a different way to do practice and it's a different way to do business. I think as professionals, we say, "We know better. You just sit there. You listen." Well, you know what? It doesn't work like that. And we, we really need to embrace family participation, decision-making process, bring them in, and discuss with them their issues and have them be part of the solution. Because we have seen that when we do that, we have more buy-in. And use of community resources to increase ability of a family to build on their existing strengths. Before, we were really deficit-based, looking at, "Well, what's your problem? What's your problem?" So, it's really more about what are the strengths that you have to overcome the adversity that you are currently having in your life. Structured decision-making. This is actually a web-based tool, and it, it's a risk tool that's evidence-based practice. And we are currently implementing this. We've trained all our staff on structured decision-making. And when we receive a referral, we use this web-based risk assessment tool, and it will help us through the process of standardizing operation and really looking at if that child is at risk or not. And we use that throughout the life of the case. It will be fully implemented by September of 2007. It reduces subsequent harm to children and families and expedites permanency for children. Wraparound. Basically, what we're talking about here is when we bring children that are at that higher level, group home 13, 14, really a lot of behavior problems. What we really want to do is, we're, we're, right now, we're sending those kids to other counties, to other RCL-level 13, 14 group homes. And what we want to do is basically bring these children back into their own community, and if we can, with relatives, and basically wrap services around them, very specific, very individualized. And we have seen that this evidence-based practice model and really does help a child be successful in either returning home or staying home. Where are we at in this process? Basically, we were approved by the state of California, and we just implemented a RFP process, and that closed. And within the month, we should be awarding that contract to a service provider with implementation by mid-November.
For how, how many will that provide housing for?
We're starting out with nine, Supervisor Cox, nine children that we're looking at placement. And as we grow that program, we wanted to start small to be successful and then grow that program to include more children as time goes on.
Males, females, or just males?
Both males.
Both male and females?
Transitional housing program plus, basically, we submitted a application to the state with regard to providing housing and supportive services to aging-out foster youth ages 18 to 24 years old. That plan was approved, and this will actually help prepare former foster youth for successful transition into adulthood. And Supervisor Conway was talking about the budget a few minutes ago, and I'm not really sure where this one's going to land with regard to the counties that have been approved most recently for the planning. But we were to receive planning monies, and we have not thus far. And I think at this point, it's, it's a matter of the budget and what will happen in that budget, and if the governor will continue to support this program as it moves forward.
I'll put that on my list.
Thank you very much. I would appreciate that. I would appreciate that. And, you know, if, if it, if it, if the state does not come through on this, I, I think it is such an important program that we really need to. We've partnered with a lot of community providers on this program, and I think it's a really important program that if we don't get, we need to look at a, a different way to do this, to support these children. Differential response. This is a partnership with community-based organization. It provides preventive and early intervention services to families with allegations of abuse. Basically, there's three different paths into, into our system and then working with differential response. We are currently collaborating with family resource centers in the areas of Goshen, Lindsay, and Woodlake. And we refer our evaluate outs, what we refer to as our evaluate outs, to these three family resource centers. What we would like to do is, we are in a demonstration project right now with regard to this program, and it is moving along, and we would like to continue down to path two, which is a, a referral that's accepted into child welfare services, and we do a dual response with the family resource centers. And I would like to turn this over to Kristi Myers at this point.
Thank you, Judy, and good morning. My name is Kristi Meyer. I'm the Assistant Chief Probation Officer for the County of Tulare. I want to state on the record that we are very excited to have been included as part of the systems improvement plan. We actually volunteered to be a part and work in concert with child welfare services. We have a number of similarities within the flow of individuals through our respective systems, and we are, have both historically been very dependent upon the court with respect to orders into placement. We found that it was extremely critical for us to be able to develop a case management information system that was far more effective and less unwieldy than the JLAN system. Thanks to the Tulare County Board of Supervisors, on July 25th, 2006, we were granted monies which would allow us to purchase a case management system called OTAMON. We went live on the adult side on June 24th of this year, and during the period of time we worked on our adult system. We also began a series of meetings with our juvenile side so that we could, at the same time and in concert, be poised to implement a case management system, which we hope to go into effect on the juvenile side on December 1st. Within the JLAN system, we were very much hindered. We were unable to either access archive information. The management of the data was never, or the availability to capture data was never available within the JLAN system. We were unable to chart trends. We were unable to determine or assess what programs worked for us and what didn't. We were pretty much dependent on some Excel spreadsheets that staff created, and when reports were due to CWS or our department, we did little hash marks and came up with some, we hope, estimated numbers. So, that we are poised, we're meeting weekly with our IT people to develop both the templates and the information systems that we're going to need to provide needed information to the state. Let me click to my next one. We're going to continue working on converting what information is present in JLAN over to our OTAMON, our caseload explorer system. We're involved in actively mapping our workflow and doing the research necessary so that our current, our new system will be compatible with information that is required by CWS. We've also been able to expand staff training through UC Davis and regional training centers throughout the state. It's somewhat of a, of a probation officer corps for placement people. We have sent two staff to date, and we have, have four staff that are pending participation. This has been a real eye-opener to us insofar as our understanding of state CWS-CMS requirements. We're also going to increase our data collection capacity. Again, as I stated, we've previously been pretty much dependent on the court with respect to who goes into out-of-home placement. In conjunction with our case management system, we have developed a new risk and needs assessment tool called the Positive Achievement Change Tool. And this will allow us prior to entry into the system and at the stage of the individual investigation to into the system and at the stage of the individual investigation to better assess the risk and needs and the strengths of families that come to our attention. During this period of time, we've been very much, I would say, blessed through our collaboration with CWS in that this year alone, they gave us thirty new computers with which to increase our abilities to collect data. They are also, the previous year, able to update our phone system so that even the simplest things, as a phone call or communication with other agencies or within the county, would be more effective. I'll now turn it over to Judy.
So, basically, as we move forward, I think it's important, as Supervisor Worsley was talking about, you know, it's wonderful to have goals, isn't it? But you really have to look at the business that you do, how you do it, are you effective? So, this is a very cyclical process. Next federal review is in February of 2008 by the feds and the state of California, and then we, in turn, will be, as a county, will be reviewed by CDSS. So, basically, what does success look like? Is you do the cyclical, and you continue to look at what you do. Children are safer, families are stronger, youth are supported, services are more responsive, results are more fair and equitable, children experience greater stability, families realize their potential, and communities share responsibility for children. And, you know, I put that one last, but really, I think I did that because it's what we need to remember. It's not about child welfare services, it's about all of us as a community to protect and really provide for children so they are successful, and I can not speak to that enough. So, basically, I would like to say thank you for your time today as Board of Supervisors and to our community partners. And this is a list of all the community partners in the system improvement planning process. They were part of this committee, and I will say the committee doesn't end. Basically, we will have quarterly meetings, review our outcomes, look at where we were at, how successful we have been, and basically, as we implement these strategies, are they working? Are they not working? What do we need to modify? Because it's a continuous, continuous process. So, I would just like to say thank you, and if there are any questions, please let me know.
Supervisor Cox?
If you have one. It's implied through the wraparound services, and it's actually in the book here, talks about mental health. Can you cover briefly the partnership you have? Because I would imagine the mental health services are probably a large part of these wraparounds, or you say wraparound, and I don't know if everybody knows what wraparound includes, but it seems to me like the mental health would be a huge partner in this process as well.
That's absolutely correct. Tulare County Mental Health is a huge partner in this, as well as the probation department, child welfare services. And if I may, it is, mental health services need to be a part of this, and I do not want to slight Dr. Dirksen, who was in the audience, so if I may.
I don't want to slight him. Do you want me to speak to him?
Good morning. As Judy indicated, we do have a major role to play, and there has actually been quite a concerted effort between our mutual departments, as well as with our partners in probation and various other community members, to embark on what became a lengthy planning process for the wraparound program, which was briefly written out here. So, in terms of the implementation of that program, it's important to the MHSA programs as well for us to move forward with that. The driver of the car is child welfare services, but we, probation and mental health essentially ride in the backseat as far as the actual running of the program, but we're all participants in that, and I think the wraparound plan turned out actually fairly well, and it's fairly detailed, and a big component of the wraparound program is certainly the delivery of mental health services. Judy mentioned a short time ago, too, I think Supervisor, you asked how many children would be served initially, and we landed on the number of nine or ten kids as part of a pilot project, and that was at the direction, or the strong suggestion, I should say, of the Department of Social Services to implement the program with some of our more challenging children in terms of bringing them home, work out what we need to in that process, and then expand from there. And that expansion, the more we expand the program, the more probation kids we should eventually be able to serve as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dirksen. Any other questions?
Just really a comment more than a question, I just, your passion for this, Judy, is evident and much appreciated because obviously, that's what drives a successful program, I think. And, you know, as I look at this, there's no higher calling, I don't think, that we can make as a county government to be involved in this process, and it's a privilege for all of us, really, but such a challenge because the wild card, of course, is personal responsibility, and so often, parents lack, make wrong choices, and I was just trying to think about how you head things off. You know, how do you head off somebody who becomes a drug addict just like that? I mean, you know, things, I know families where things are going along like, appear to be very smooth, and then suddenly, the bottom just drops out. And how do you prepare for that? I mean, you really can't, you have to just be quick to provide those wraparound-type services to deal with an issue after, after you get, I mean, there are other types, obviously, where it's more methodical and perhaps slower, but it's a tremendous challenge and certainly a very high calling. I just want to say thank you.
I thank you for your comment in responding with regard to the issues that, you know, families face. I think that as social workers, what's really difficult is that we have mandates that we need to go by, and they're really not in alignment with people overcoming addiction and going through recovery. So, it's, and I know that we're looking at legislation and embracing legislation that will start to change these and attempt to fix those challenges, if you will. However, I think that what we really need to look at is permanency of children, and for so many years, children grew up in our system, and we really need to concentrate our efforts there, and what is best for that child. And it really is about providing permanency and a connection for that child so that they are successful. So, but thank you for your comment. I appreciate that very much.
Supervisor Cox? I have one comment now, since I've run out of questions. I am glad to see that you've included a lot of training in there for parents, foster parents. My wife and I adopted two DEIs, and like on the way out on our last meeting, oh, by the way, these are some of the things that could happen because of their exposure to drugs when they hit years twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and it was the last parting thing on the way out, and guess what? It sure enough happened, and it would have been nice to have a little more in-depth training or information about that instead of, oh, by the way. Did they give you a callback number? Actually, they actually called every month, even after we finished adopting our two girls, we received a phone call every month. We have another child. Do you want another child? For about, that was the first daughter, for about a year and a half, the calls stopped, and we got a call one day, and they said, we have a child, and we said, okay, we'll take that child. And then the calls stopped. So, that's why my comment was, there might be people out there that, you know, if those calls started again, because I know there's not a shortage of children needing homes.
That's correct. There isn't, there isn't. And it really speaks to, your comment speaks to the ability to provide more of that information upfront and work with that adoptive family, because what we see sometimes, unfortunately, is because of the issues that families then face once they adopt children that were in our system, is relinquishment. They want to relinquish that child because it's so difficult to deal with those issues.
And we've seen that happen personally as well, to where a child hits that eighteenth year, and the door opens up, and they get a boot and say goodbye.
Right.
Very sad, very unfortunate.
It is.
But I'm glad to see that you have the training, and I think that's a very important part that we missed out on the years ago that we were in the program, so I'm glad to see that in there, as part of that strategy.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? I thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we bring it to the board as an action item, is there anybody wishing to address the item?
Mr. Chairman, if I might make a comment, this is kind of a hidden system because people cannot attend these proceedings. They're not reported in the press unless there's some sort of disastrous thing that happens to a child. But I really want to tell you how much I appreciate the comments that your supervisors have made today about this program. I have an entire unit of my office that does nothing but this work five days a week, more than forty hours a week, doing this representation, and I tell them that this is the most important work that we have to do in our office, but they sometimes feel like the poor stepchildren. So, I'm going to be repeating your comments to them on Thursday, and I really appreciate your recognition of the importance of this program.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend approval, items one, two, three.
Second. Moving second, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for the presentation, and we all appreciate what you, all departments do in this issue. Item eighteen is off agenda. It's been moved to closed session. Counselor?
Ask me if we have need for closed session, Mr. Chairman?
Do we have a need?
We do. Excuse me, items C, D, and H are off your board's agenda. The remaining items, as indicated on your board's regular agenda and addendum, are still on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements, and that's it.
Do we keep items three and four, our packets for the clerk?
No.
That's going to have to be completely re-noticed, and the numbers that you're going to get are going to be different, so.
Oh, so we can discard them? Round file them?
I hate to do that.
Thank you.
Wish to keep them, you of course.
Thank you for your attempts.